Good morning. Called to order the February 26, 2019, meeting for the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here. I see you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government. It's usually limited to three minutes pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman Manlisalina, it kind of concerns a budget issue, spending money not wisely. Why would one arm of the government duplicate services in another department? We're having an overlap of services. I would suggest maybe that guys, you might want to look into that sometime because I know of a department where one department is covering another in government. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded until we approve today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for February 19, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of February 19, 2019 as presented.
Second motion. Been moved and seconded until we approve the county commission minutes of February 19, 2019 with no additions or corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number three.
Kansas Adult Education Association Award Recognition with Annie Grievous, Director, and Brian Vesser, Drug Court Coordinator with Community Corrections.
Ms. Nurse, actually it's going to be Judge Johnson, Kelly Mowbray from the Adult Education and Brian Vesser.
Okay. Please, yeah, please step to the microphones. And we ask you please state your names, please.
My name is Kelly Mowbray.
Jared Johnson.
Brian Vesser.
Okay. Thank you.
It's my honor to be here this morning. I'm the Director of the Adult Education Center for USD 305. Every year, our state association, the Kansas Adult Education Association, grants awards and it's a competitive nature and I have the honor of submitting a very special group from Saline County and I'd like to share the brief nomination with you. The Salina Adult Education Center is proud to nominate the Saline County Drug Court and Community Corrections Team for the 2019 Kansas Adult Education Association Humanitarian Award. The individuals on this team are individually and collectively supportive of literacy awareness as well as helping individuals strengthen cognitive capacity to obtain and retain quality employment. The Saline County Community Corrections and Drug Court Team utilized the Salina Adult Education Center services to support that goal. It's important to understand some background of the Drug Court Team. It was founded in Saline County in 2013 and the Drug Court Team is a team-based approach utilizing evidence-based practices to address drug addiction and criminal behavior. The team of Drug Court professionals consists of the judge, ISOs, law enforcement, the county attorney, public defender, and treatment providers, both drug and alcohol and mental health. They focus on using evidence-based practices available for community supports and organizations to assist clients with dealing with drug addiction and criminal lifestyles. Since the Drug Court's inception, they have served 304 clients and have had 93 successful graduations to date. There are currently 102 clients in the program with an average of two new clients per week. The impressive success rate is currently 89% of graduates remaining drug-free for at least two years after graduation. Statistics are kept up to two years after graduation, so most graduating clients have maintained sobriety longer than two years. The partnership between Corrections and Adult Education has strengthened. The staffs of both entities have been able to collaborate on many individual cases and work together to help overcome barriers, provide support, and help people move into more stable employment and living environments. For the graduates of Partners for Success, both teams continue to celebrate longevity of success together as well as come together if needed to help connect people to resources when they need to take those steps or if they take those steps backward. Often, an ISO may be meeting with a client and they will call me at the Education Center to confer whether Partners for Success or a GED program is a good fit so they can continue to get their high school credential if needed as well. In three years, Salina's Partners for Success program has endorsed 62 students in the first 10 classes. 16 of them have been referred by Community Corrections and the Drug Court Team. As this nomination is written, we, actually this week, we're completing class 11. Of the seven that started in the class, three of them are from Corrections and Drug Court. Several of them have been involved in the actual Partners for Success activities, including resume and application review and mock interviews. You will see members of the Drug Court and Corrections Team, including Judge Johnson, at every Partners for Success graduation. In the fall, we graduated 10, 10, and there were seven students. The four that graduated were all from Corrections and Drug Court. We made the front page of the Salina Journal with a pretty massive article and picture. How does the Salina Adult Education Center know that Community Corrections and Drug Court have bought into adult education and employment programming through the Salina Adult Ed Center? Brian Vesser, Saline County Drug Court Coordinator, says, "We have many wonderful support agencies in Saline County. The Salina Adult Education Center and Partners for Success is one of the strongest and most successful programs we work with. The program is relentless in the pursuit of client success and provides our clients with a vast toolbox of tools to obtain long-term, healthy, and productive lives. This staff is passionate about the clients and it shows success of the clients as they continue to participate in Partners for Success." So it's my honor to recognize in front of the commissioners, Judge Johnson, Brian Vesser, Annie, the entire Corrections and Drug Court Team.
I just want to say that this is a huge honor for Community Corrections and the Drug Court Treatment Team and it just goes to show what, what value we have in our community support programs and the, the help that is out there for people if we can get them to it.
I won't keep you long, but I did want to thank this commission and this, the support that you have provided us consistently over the years. When Judge Helmer and Ms. Grievous approached me back in 2013 about the program, I had no idea it would grow to what it is, nor did I really understand the support that this county and this commission would provide and without it, we would not be here and where we are. I'd also like to thank, there are a lot of people behind me that have come today to show support and they are really the program. And if you look back, you'll see prosecutors, Amy Norton, you'll see Defense Counsel Jacob Noak, Mark Dinkel, you'll see other prosecutors, Brad Sutton, Annie Umpenin. I'm going to miss some of them, but you'll also see Ms. Grievous, Candace from CKF, ISOs, Bernie, who's our law enforcement officer, and I know I'm missing a few, but those staff are the ones that put in the work. Ultimately, the clients are the one that put, ones that put in an enormous amount of work, but it's Partners for Success and programs like that in the community combined with your support that makes a program like this possible to serve the needs of those in this program. And I also want to emphasize that we are the most difficult program in the criminal justice system in Saline County and our participants work hard and they need the support that's provided by places like Partners for Success, Catholic Charities, et cetera, to do what is in front of them. But I wanted to thank you for the support you've provided us. It is invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, this is a very successful and important part of, of the, of the process. I commend those who were, had the vision to get this program started in the first place and the wherewithal that all of you have contributed to this for Saline County. I do have one question regarding, how many other counties have a program similar to this?
Sorry, I should know my procedure better than to simply just sit down and not, a lot of questions to be asked. It's been a while since I've been in front of a commission and it was usually the City Commission years ago with Clark Meisen Linville, so I apologize. That was rude of me.
Your excuse, sir.
Thank you. There are other jurisdictions that have it. I don't have the exhaustive list, but Lyons County, there's a southeastern county, south of Miami County, I don't know if you know the, remember the name of it. Sedgwick has one in their municipal court.
Shawnee County.
Shawnee County has one. Junction had one for a bit, but they no longer have one, or Geary County, excuse me, not Junction.
Ellis County.
Ellis County. And I was in front of the legislature a couple of weeks ago. We were giving testimony on a bill that was essentially, Bill 2052, that was going to kill probation after 50% of the time if people are doing well. And we were explaining to them why that would be so detrimental to someone in recovery to simply shorten their probation by that amount of time without taking into account programs such as Drug Court. And one of the legislators asked me at the end what I would think about a statewide Drug Court program and I told him I'd be excited about that proposition, so the thought's out there, but there's probably just a handful right now of Drug Courts in this state.
Well, this Drug Court, obviously, you know, like I said, you should be commended for doing it. It's, it's a model plan for any other counties that, that might be participating or want to look at it as a participant and so, again, I just can't say thank you enough to all the, of those who are involved in this program, not to mention the success rate and the successful people that it's gotten them back into society and, and headed down the right path, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'd like to also comment about employers such as Mr. Shadwick there that employs our participants and the support that that provides the community as well. That should be noted. Thank you as well. Any other questions before I step down?
Any other comments from? Thank you. It's a great program. Brian?
Thank you and I apologize also, but I would like to extend an invitation to our next graduation for anybody that would like to attend. It is March 18th at approximately 2:30 in courtroom 301. We have a record number graduating this year, or this, at this Drug Court. We'll have 11 clients graduating the program. Of those 11 clients, several of them have gone through the program with very few violations, so they've really worked hard at their sobriety.
Right. Thank you again.
Would everybody that participates in the Drug Court Treatment Team please stand? As most of you are here, I just want everybody to see that, and this is not everybody, but I'm just so proud of the whole team and everybody that participates, so.
These are all people that have, that are participants in the team for Drug Court, so.
Countless hours, emails back and forth, but they dedicate two and a half hours every Monday to this process and I couldn't be more grateful.
Well, again, thanks. So, I interrupted you. Thank you so much. All right, is there, not normally would I take public comment on, on this situation, but I will take one on this particular one if anyone wishes to comment any further. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for item number three? Four. Excuse me. That was item number three, four. How about item number four?
Resolution 19-2269, North Central Regional Planning Commission Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Support with Doug McKinney, Executive Director with our Central Regional Planning Committee.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and interact.
Absolutely.
This isn't a, a rare opportunity. Two or three times a year, we try to be here, but this one is a little bit more unique, especially regarding the resolution, because that's a every-five-year update that we're required to do by the federal government in regards to partnership planning undertakings and it involves what I'd call a, a document. Now, you, you have a brief undertaking of that and I'm going to give you what I call the update, which our executive board, it's a little bit more polished and elaborate. Our executive board will be asked to bless this on Friday because it's due in to the federal government in mid-March to the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration. And as you recall, there was a federal shutdown for five weeks and since we use the resolutions of support from the 12 counties and this update document to seek the planning partnership funds for $70,000 to help, I call it, match local dues from around the region for planning activities, which are fully listed on several pages inside there in this updated document, this vision that we've had a lot of interaction with. Well, in that whole process, the federal shutdown slowed what I call interaction with federal government and it slowed some of their directives down. Yes, we had kind of a white paper guideline, but it just delayed some of the, the process. So, we're getting out and we're making these rounds now with what I call more of a polished type feature here with five visions that the executive board, including Melissa Hodges on my left and Hannah Stanbaugh representing Saline County, as well as others throughout the region, 16 board members, have played a big role in suggesting echoing thoughts from staff, our development team, revolving loan fund committee, which Mitch Robinson sits on from down here, our business loan advisory group, our NCKCN affiliate, their board, and a whole host of others from USDA, USD 305, et cetera. Technical College, Polytech, just a lot of different folks are interactive as part of this stakeholder process and the various forums that we've held and, and business sectors and others. So, this is what I would call the game plan for the next five years, but it's flexible and that's the way it's meant to be. So if you take a glance at this, or even right now, if you have thoughts on what we're up to, what we're doing, what the game plan is, let us know and let Hannah know, certainly Melissa, others that can help make a difference in regards to our planning efforts on these different undertakings and we will see to it that things are followed up on and checked out, so. Just a whole host of things and as you know, in, in this community and the region as a whole, surprises can happen and, well, issues come up or disasters take place or good things arise at our doorstep, opportunities develop, so. But that's what this special interaction is today and related to the resolution of general support. Since 1979, it's been done every five years, but this is a more polished vision statement type process, seeking your buy-in, your support, your interaction.
Well, personally, you have mine. I know that, I think I've noted there's 12 counties involved in the North Central Regional Planning Commission.
Yes.
That's correct.
With the development district, we do homeland security, fiscal management in other parts of the state. We do weatherization further west, northwest, but the primary development district is the 12 counties.
I know that, you know, speaking technically, Saline, Salina, and Saline County are both supported by this region greatly and from an economic standpoint, we have big-time ties to North Central Kansas, Ottawa County, Saline County, Cloud County, et cetera. So, it's important to us to continue down this path, it seems to me like so. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Questions from Mr. McKinney or Melissa? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion, or I guess I should ask for public comment because there is a resolution that's going to require action. Is there any public comment or wishes to speak on this? So, what you're looking for now is a, a support document here from, signed by the commission, I presume, which is regarding Resolution 19-2269, so bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt and pass Resolution 19-2269, North Central Regional Planning Commission Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Support Letter.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded that we support Resolution 19-2269 for the North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Support. Are there any other comments or questions from the commission? Hearing none, I will ask for all those in favor to say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you're certainly welcome, invited to attend any kind of executive board endeavor. I know a couple of you have in the past year, so feel free to ride along with Hannah or come in her stead if she can't make it, but she's pretty sound at attending. She couldn't attend today because of a homeland security function training she needed to go to, but as far as in this realm, but.
Okay.
Okay. We'll come back with updates here in the not-too-distant future, so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doug.
We'll now move on to item number five.
Review of 2018 DOS Finances with Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Morning, Rosie.
Good morning.
I do, I do want to point out that this is somewhat of a, a repeat of our study session last week, but I felt it important to ask Rosie to, to go over these numbers and, and this report in front of the TV cameras, so we're going to do it again.
All right. Well, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to go through a little report I put together for you on the fiscal for 2018. So first is the county budget. What was funded to our department for senior services for 2018? A total of $690,002.94 in '23 and then you can kind of see where we broke up those dollars. So food services was $364,000, personnel $164,279 in '23, and then office expenses And the next slide is the funding that we've actually brought in. So all the monies that we brought in through daily sales, Meals on Wheels full pay, subsidized funding that we received from North Central Flint Hills, area agency on aging, Sunflower Adult Day services, so that's a total of $335,605.92. And then below, I put a graph so you could kind of see what the high ones were. Okay. Next slide is the year-end financials. So the first is the actual for revenue and expenses and the total cost to the county and then the second is the budget with a revenue and expenses. So we brought in a total of $335,606. The expenses was six, or the expense, the budget was, were, total expenses was $676.305, so the total cost to the county was $340,779.
So that number is slightly different than last week, if I'm not mistaken. We were, we were talking $2,000 difference last week and there now there's, it's a $5,000. Is it my?
What it was is I had some dollars that we brought forward from Sunflower Bank and I can't account for those for 2018. They said it was prior to, so, and then what Rita was talking about is for the Commission on Aging for 2018, you guys funded, or the county funded, $328,000. So the difference of that with the monies that were brought forward with Sunflower that I can't account for for 2018, instead it was a 2017, was about $2,000. So if you look at it this way, the total cost to the county over what was projected was about, is about $12,000, since I can't count the other.
You concur with that. Andrew?
Yeah, I helped Rosie put these financials together. I wasn't here last week, so I can't recall. I've seen the spreadsheets. Previously, we just looked at expenses from your 676 to the 690. I think she, Rosie, reported a $13,000.
Unexpended balance is what I.
Unexpended balance, basically, that were under budget on the expenses part of it. I wanted to capture the revenue as well.
Right.
Because that is a piece of this, so that's why I have both the actual and the budget so you kind of get the whole picture of what was going on.
So we, we changed the slide a little bit, so it's kind of confusing.
For someone who's.
From what I had talked about.
Obviously not a CPA, but I mean, I look at the 340 versus the 328 and that comes up to be 12 for me.
Yes.
So.
Okay. And then we had three different fundraising events in 2018. The first one was Match Madness. We raised $7,397.66. Prescott Foley House and then the letter campaign. It was just a flyer that I sent out to everyone I could think of from past contributors to Meals on Wheels volunteers, so the total for the different fundraising events that we had this year was $61,694.18. And then on this slide, I put together just a summary of what I have in every donation fund that we have right now. So, exercise, Meals on Wheels, senior services, and. So, exercise, Meals on Wheels, senior services, and bingo. That's a total of $102,72.75.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
That we raised in 2018.
Ask a question. The previous slide, $61,000, is it reflected in this $102?
Yes.
Okay. So, part of this $102 is this 61.
Right. I'm just giving you a breakdown of which, how much, where the money was deposited.
Right.
Yeah.
Clearing my cobwebs.
Well, the number that jumps out at me unbelievably from the community is the donations for Meals on Wheels of almost $74,000. That just is so important.
Yes.
And there are so many people in need of that service. And I was over the other day and watched a number of volunteers coming in and out about 11 o'clock in the morning to get the food, to deliver it. And most of them were senior citizens themselves.
Yes.
That will probably, potentially need the service someday. So, it, that number just is overwhelming to me to.
Well, you will see that. I mean, a lot of people that do receive Meals on Wheels did volunteer at one time. About 160 different volunteers that deliver for us.
You know, one thing that I would like to challenge staff with, the $102,000 is down there, and obviously, it's, some of it's bingo money, some of it's exercise and so forth, is to figure out a way that we can maybe endow some of these funds to, you know, for future projects and things like that and not go into our regular budget.
That would be.
You know, but take that money and get something done somewhere. I'm not smart enough to figure it out, obviously, but you know what goes on over there and what money you need and so forth and.
Well, and then in speaking with Andrew and Rita, you know, we'd like to use those dollars for match funds for grants for the building.
I recall that conversation now, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Are you going to touch on that a little bit here, or?
If you'd like me to, yes. There's a, Andrew and I are going to meet with Rita here hopefully this week, and we're going to discuss, you know, we're going to go ahead and do the roof. It's leaking right now, and then we're going to go ahead and work on the bathroom. So, we're going to go through the process of how we put it out for bid and do we need an architect, do we not need an architect? So, we're going to ask the county for a third match. We're going to use some of our donation dollars, and then we would like to maybe seek out some fundraising as well.
You know, Benzy's here. You might also check with the North Central Kansas Planning Commission and see what funds might be available through them or ideas that they might have regarding that, because I know they've done that in other communities. Is that right, Doug?
Well, and going back, my mind has been jogged to 1991, too, on the elevator project, which.
You might step to the microphone, if you would, please.
My mind's been jogged on the elevator project in 1991, too. I just remember David Gersh was with the county in those days, and that was a project we helped facilitate. It was block grant monies, which are a little tighter these days, but it's still a possibility. Of course, the deadline isn't until October of this year, and funding awards not well into next year. So, it would have to be some special type, unique project that'd be a little bit elaborate in nature, but there could be another funding source or two that hasn't been explored.
Right. My thought is that, you know, without just saying, Doug, we want the North Central Kansas to give us some money, is that perhaps you could help, we're all novices at this to some extent.
Could be some dialogue.
And you've got a lot of experience in that background, so.
And certainly, the big animal northwest, I don't know if Dane Hansen has been approached, but.
I think that we're going to.
But that could be looked at as well. It's not going to hurt anything to talk to them, and they have an application deadline every month.
Exactly.
Their board meets on a monthly basis, so it's a possibility. Just needs some refinement, and that's okay for us. I can either support it myself or with staff time, either ways.
Okay. That was exactly what I'm asking for, is some support from you in terms of your think tank, so to speak, so.
Yeah.
Not a problem. All right. Thank you.
One question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. On your budget and your actual cost of county, we budgeted it $328,480, and it came in $340, about the $12,000 that the chairman was talking about. Where, can you pinpoint where that $12,000, was that in food service? Was that in expenses to the building, or?
Well, it's kind of confusing to look at this, this, I mean, the budget is what they projected it would be. The actual is what it actually cost. So, they're, on their revenue, that's, they projected I would bring in $361,000. Well, I brought in $335,000, but they didn't really know, you know, what would happen. Am I answering your question?
Well, when you talk about what was budget and what was actual as far as revenue, do you not plug in any of the donations for Meals on Wheels and show that as actual?
No, not in this. This is just what it costs the county on this page.
And do we not, do we not assume that when we budget for the next year, that there will be some donations coming in to?
Um, well.
I don't understand why that isn't reflected. Doesn't some of the Meals on Wheels donations, aren't they specific to go towards food service or Meals on Wheels?
Yes. I mean, when they, when you make a donation to Meals on Wheels, I mean, I did separate it so that they could go into that donation account. Now, that's not reflected on the expenses, the year-end financials.
Keep in mind, Commissioner, the first, that was our first year for making a budget in 2018.
Uh-huh.
And we were using some data that wasn't real precise to do that budget.
Right.
So, in the future, if you want some of those donation monies to be a source of revenue, it could be done that way to fund just the regular program. But we just put in, you know, revenue that we were expecting to receive from the meals in that original 2018 budget.
Without having any donations reflected in that.
Right, right. Because at that time we.
So, we actually went over budget, $12,000.
Right. No, she was under budget.
I had about $13,000 in unexpended funds.
Because her expenses were less than was expected, so.
Right.
Her, even though her revenues were down, she made up for it and reduced expenses.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not reading this right, and I need educated, because.
I know, it's kind of confusing. Should have left in that other slide.
We budgeted $328,000, and our actual expense was $340,000, is what I'm seeing here.
Well, this, the budget column is just a complete prediction. They didn't really.
Correct, right.
So, the actual is over here. I mean, they did, I mean, my actual budget was $690,294, but I didn't expend that entire budget. I had about $13,000 remaining.
I think what Commissioner Wees is getting at, and I look at it the same way, is can we not take $12,000 that was donated to Meals on Wheels, which is under the budget, and make that, those two numbers come out at the same at the bottom? Andrew, I'd ask that question of you.
When people donate to the Meals on Wheels, do they donate to the operations, or is it more for, so the program can grow?
Well, I would say when you make a Meals on Wheels donation, they donate it so that people have food. I mean, so that it can continue, so they receive food, or to the production of that food. So, I mean, let's say if we want to do a remodel to the kitchen, I would probably use a portion of those dollars to help facilitate that.
Well, I guess, and what Jim's really driving at is, and I'm still looking at this $12,000 difference in those two numbers, technically, the county has to make up that $12,000.
Correct.
Correct? And that's why I'm saying, and I think Jim is alluding to the same thing, is if we can take that money out of, and we're not looking to dodge our obligation, I mean, we're going to continue to fund this to the best of we can for your, for your operation. But to take that $12,000 and show it in this, from a donation standpoint, which brings us to balanced books.
Correct. Or Rita, could you, I didn't catch how, specify the $13,000 savings. I'm not seeing it on this spreadsheet.
Well, it's not showing here, and I don't know exactly, it's the way she put her numbers together, because she ended up with $13,000 more money that was left from the budget. So, I'm not for sure exactly what you did here in this.
Well, we, Andrew and I, I mean, he, we changed this table, so it's kind of confusing.
It is confusing, because this isn't what your budget came out at the end of the year.
No, not at all.
She came out $13,000.
Yeah, so we're not in a hole at all. We actually have $13,000 of unexpended funds that we didn't spend in 2018.
And where would that?
That line item is under expenses. So, if you look at the actual expenses, 676 to the 690 is where you get the $13,900. So, it's just an accounting, it's what you want to view. Do you want to look at the holistic approach, including revenue, or if you want, just want to look at the expense side of it? So, when you look at just expenses, yes, the senior services spent $13,900 less than their budgeted expenses of 690. So, that's where that number's coming from.
Okay, but they were $24,000 or something behind in revenue.
That revenue was.
Projection.
Was, a loose projection, since it was the first time that we.
Right.
First year that we took over the senior services. So, we, that was, I don't want to say a shot in the dark, but it was.
That's not hitting it too far away. I mean, you're pretty close.
Considering what we had to work with.
Right. Okay.
The good thing was the expenses we, we were much, much closer on, so we have adjusted that for 2019 to be more realistic.
So, are you showing here these are the actual tax dollars? Is that what you were trying to prove?
Well, just net income or net loss, per se.
Okay, but this is not the actual budget?
No.
That the published budget.
The right side is, yes.
Further questions from commissioners? Okay, proceed.
Kevin, it's not, it's not. Okay, then on the, the average daily population for the Commission on Aging, I put together their, their last report for 2017, and they did collect their data just a little bit different, the dining room, Meals on Wheels, Frozen, and Adult Day. So, if you look at their bottom numbers, we're probably what you want to look. For each month, that's their average. And then here is, Kevin, here's ours for 2018 under senior services. So, you'll see that we did break out our numbers, just a little bit different. The board met, and they wanted to see the, these numbers, the dining room full pay, Meals on Wheels full pay, Meals on Wheels subsidized, and the Adult Day Sunflower. So, and then again, the bottom is the number, the average for that month that you'd want to look at. So, the ADP difference for 2017, the Commission on Aging was 312, and that was just the average of that in number for the entire year. 2018, under senior services, was 330. So, we're about 18 higher on average per month.
So, pretty, really, roughly, it's getting close to 10%, probably 8% or so.
And some months are, months are a lot higher, like January, February this year, a little bit lower than we were. I think it's just the cold.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Rosie, I, one thing, and in 2017, you have a column there called Frozen, and it's not in 2018.
Yeah, they, that's what I was telling you, that they changed, that our board met, and they asked to see a better breakdown of everything. So, if you look at the in-number, I mean, that's the numbers that I believe that you'd want to look at. They have, our collection's just a.
Excuse me, but is the frozen, where does it show up in this at all in the 2018?
They just combined them. You know, before they broke out, you know, how many Meals on Wheels participants received a frozen meal? Now, it's just Meals on Wheels, frozen and.
Oh.
Hot meal.
Okay.
Oh, so the frozen is frozen meals?
Yeah. You know, on Friday, each Meals on Wheels participants, they get two frozen meals for Saturday and Sunday.
On, that's the home delivery.
Right, on the home delivery, yes.
Okay.
Or they could come in and get them too.
But that's why I was, it just slid into the meals. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me.
Anything else?
No.
Further questions? Okay, well, thank you for your, I will ask for, if there's a public comment on this report.
Karen Shade Salina. As prefacing, I went to the budget update by the city, and they provided 51 pages of detail. So, I, as, as someone who's going to type this up, I really appreciate when we have the numbers. I'm not so sure I'll understand my scrawl. One other thing I'm trying to understand, when the Commission on Aging in 2017, how much money did the county provide the Commission on Aging for their programs? Seems to me it was $70,000, or am I way off base?
No, it's way off.
It's, yeah, it was closer to the $330,000, $320-some-thousand dollars.
$328,000.
$328,000. Now, the, the big expenditure was that when we had to pick up the money from the previous COA to fund that, the past bills.
Okay. So, the amount of subsidy from, when it was COA versus under the current Department of Senior Services, that hasn't radically changed.
No.
There are some other differences in services you're providing.
Yes.
But, but it's, that's where I had a misimpression, and that's kind of where, okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, the numbers vary, because, because we're breaking this out a little further than the COA did. The COA provided us, I mean, they didn't really, they provided us with the, we provided them with $328,000, and that's about as far as it went. I think maybe Commissioner Wees can speak a little bit further to that, being on that board at the time, but they didn't tell us, if I recall correctly, they didn't tell us where the $328,000 necessarily went.
Okay.
And what their bills were.
Well, and that's where I, maybe I had a misunderstanding from all along, and that's where it's like, it's nice to have documents where.
We're getting the full report now as to the income, outgo, revenue, budget, expenses, so forth.
Good. And, you know, I want to commend staff for, when you have that kind of a change in a senior feeding operation to maintain participation and build on that, that's a huge kudo, because things could go different directions. The other thing I wanted to just kind of speak to, there was mention in the study session about the possibility of your, your food service company, your vendor, perhaps wanting to enter a five-year contract, perhaps wanting to provide a sign. I'm assuming it's more like a billboard sign, 32 square feet, four by eight or something.
Well, that's totally, that's not on the, on the plan right just yet.
Okay.
I mean, that, Rosie spoke to that.
Well, I would just suggest that there's a lot of safety concerns about that, so I will bring it up at an appropriate time.
I'm, correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments and questions. You know, and I'll, I'll kind of end the whole thing with, as Andrew alluded to, and Rosie too, it's kind of a shot in the dark, you know, to go into a new area and not really have very accurate numbers to work with from the previous landlords or commission, COA. We got pretty darn close, so it's pretty close. All right.
Good job.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda. Are there any questions or other business or announcements from the commissioners? I will say that last Thursday night, I did, was asked to attend the Farm Bureau meeting, and, which I did, and then presented some things to them that the county's presently working on, and primarily in the Expo Center radio and the jail things that are, that are on the table for us, and we had quite a, quite a discussion, for the most part, and they were all rural people. They were very complimentary of our attempt to do the roads and what road and bridges accomplished, and things are going, so. Also, on Friday, I attended the KAC governing board. They have appointed a interim director, Dory Sullivan, who's presently on staff, will take over for the next few months. They also hired a headhunter for that position, that is, the Kansas League of Municipalities will lead that forward. They also are in the process of hiring a finance and budget director, which I think is going to be done in the next few days. is going to be done in the next few days. Also, some things that were updated, there are three things pretty important, as far as I'm concerned, to the counties. House Bill 2135, which would repeal the statutes to restrict local government control regarding political signs in the right-of-way. House Bill 2236 would allow county appraisers to be suspended or terminated based on percentage of informal hearing requests. House Bill 2237 also has a hearing that would allow local government to publish legal notices on the internet. It would not require online publication, but would give local government the option. So, those are some pretty important things that are, that are being discussed this week at the Kansas Senate and House. I'm happy to observe on that commission, that board, the Kansas Association of Counties, it's been quite fulfilling and visionary. Things that are coming up are very interesting to me, so. That having been said, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. We will follow this up with a short, a brief meeting in the adjoining room for meeting number two, so thank you for watching.